All right, folks, this is, uh, it's 5 o'clock for our special call meeting, and this is a continuation of our meeting from June the 21st, to get our budget set and get everything done. So, the first order of business is, uh, do we need a roll call?
You can have one if you'd like.
I think we should.
Or you can say everybody's present.
Yeah.
Everybody's ready to do it.
Everybody's present.
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
Yes.
All right. Number one, ordinance 2022-1096, and ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the year beginning July the 1st of 2022 and ending June the 30th of 2023.
Mayor and commissioners, um, there's only two tiny changes from what you saw on the 21st, and that is that Loretta has changed the sanitation account numbers, assuming that we changed sanitation and put it in the general fund, and then we missed the $500 interest, uh, payment on the fire truck that, uh, we had. We had the payment but not the interest attached to it. So that's the only changes since you've seen it on the 21st. And as you know, staff is recommending that we keep the tax rate at $1.69 and, uh, not the 1.2831 that was certified by the comptroller's office.
Okay.
And happy to answer any questions about what is in the budget or not. The street department, uh, for Ted Howe, that, that money was, was put in there. It wasn't there on the 21st, so that's not a change since the last time. But if there's anything else that you're wondering if it's included, um, one thing we do when we budget is we budget, uh, very high on expenditures, and we budget very low on revenue, so that we, we're not taking any risks. I do believe we're gonna have more revenue. Honestly, I do believe we probably have high expenditures too. But I'm, I'm hoping that we can do some more things in this budget than we're currently saying we can. We did get our certified number back from the state. We do have a population now of 5,296, and that's money for us right there. So that's official now, and that is our new, uh, sentiment. So that number will help us. That, those numbers aren't in this budget, because we didn't have it certified until literally yesterday.
Correct.
So I think they'll have some leeway to do a few things, like maybe pave a street. Uh, just right now, uh, with the expenses, we're not comfortable saying that yet.
I understand. Any questions for Kate concerning additions, subtractions, any part of the budget?
Mayor, only thing I got, which, you know, I met with Kate and them as well as everybody else. And I, I'm not saying, you know, we don't need $1.69. It's not my call or whatever. But I asked, was there any way for $1.50? And the reason I asked for $1.50 is because, to me, it's gonna be putting a, a burden on a lot of people in the city. But I also know, I guess, what it takes for the city to operate on. And when I know that, I guess, you know, when people ask you about the streets, and then we're, you know, you're told, you know, there's no way, you know, the streets can be paved, although now, you know, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
But until I, until I get a definite, I'm just stuck on $1.50.
Okay.
And I'm sorry.
That's fair.
And so you all know $1.50 puts us, uh, $294,000 lower.
Lower. Yeah, I ran the numbers today.
Just ran that, ran those numbers. And you, I don't know if you want to give those tax rates.
That's exactly what I was gonna, that was, that was my, I'm just gonna let everybody speak before I was gonna do this, but Kate brought it up. Uh, I met with Bobby Daniels just to try to make sure I completely understood everything that was going on. And, uh, here's the penny rates for Murray County. As a whole, Murray County, a penny is $371,400. For the city of Columbia, it is $143,400. For Spring Hill, it is $85,100. And for Mount Pleasant, it is $15,400. It's significant.
Mm-hmm.
And with the growth we've got coming, plus along with, uh, the number of projects that we have going on, and realizing what happened with the sewer project, and thinking 8B was gonna cover it, and it turns out being 15, I think we're gonna have quite a bit of overruns in some of the projects we have. So I, I, I feel like we've got a good budget, so.
And I wanted to, uh, tack onto what you just said. I, I went down and, and looked at all the grants that we have right now and what we've applied for, and they total almost $6 million between the city, CDBG, the county, uh, CDBG, the, uh, TAP grant, which is downtown revitalization, our ARP money that we're getting through the state, the ARP money that we're getting through TDEC, um, along with mandated bridge work, and the Redwood Circle, um, culvert, that's just under $6 million. My biggest concern is if we don't finish any of those, we don't get state reimbursement, and we don't get any more state grants.
No more grants.
So it's, it's like a $6 million, um, hit. It could be very scary. But you, this is also, this is unprecedented times. I hate that, as elected officials, that you're, you're having to look at this right now. But, um, you didn't cause COVID, you didn't cause these supply chain issues. We've gotta finish these projects that we're starting, and, and this is where we are.
Well, we won't get no more grant money if we don't do it.
If you don't finish a state project, you don't get reimbursed, and then you don't get another.
And you don't get anymore.
We wouldn't have finished a splash pad. No more state, not just Parks and Rec, no more state.
No more.
No more periodic cost of a woman.
With, uh, with his suggestion of 100, I mean, $1.50. Currently, um, the sales tax that we would vote on going to the schools, that's not going to the schools.
Correct.
This time. That is in our budget.
Yes.
So it's not like we can say, oh, we're gonna cancel that again, because it's already in there.
Already in there. You'd have to vote to put it back to the schools.
Right.
And I think you all have the information I shared with you from the city attorney that couldn't be here tonight on the process to make sure that we follow the public notice in the public hearing.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments from the commission? Hearing none, I would, oh, go ahead, Ma'am.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Which, I mean, I, I know we don't like to come back, you know, man, you know, the bu, you know, the budget and stuff. But is there any way that we could do that this year?
No. Once you set the tax rate, it's set.
You can change it next fiscal year, but, um, my concern is we're gonna, we're gonna be in.
No, I'm talking about if we go over, you know, from what we need. I understand we do.
Mm-hmm.
But I, it's just, it's just hard to lead them.
But the tax, the tax rate is actually for salaries. Am I not correct?
A lot of it is salaries. It's all your general fund expenses, but it's, it's more than just, it's your police, it's your buyer, it's your codes, um, uh, salaries, benefits, and, and, uh, Mr. Davis and I talked about that as well, and I've done, I've done some research, and every, everything talks about the general fund, it's property tax, sales tax, it's your permits, it's your, all of your fees that you charge, your property tax. I, I don't know a city that I've ever been around that funds their general fund. Typically, sales tax, and, and especially in cities that have some retail and stuff, that's gonna be higher than your property tax.
Yes.
Mayor, may I say just one more time?
Sure.
You know?
That's while we're here.
I'll, I'll keep it short. One reason we're sort of in this position is because, I mean, we really haven't had a tax increase, what you say, a tax increase, since 2013. And it's like, it's like when I'm on, you know, on the power board or whatever, you know, and, and we're making adjustments or whatever, you know? And to me, it's just a whole lot easier if you just do a little bit, I guess, to the citizens at one time, instead of waiting.
Eight years.
Eight years, you know, to throw it on there. And we gotta be realistic, just like what you're saying when we go. It takes to operate, because this is actually a business, whether, whether we wanna say it or not.
Do, do smaller.
It's actually a business.
Record.
Is there any way that we can just do it in small increments? I mean, just like we did the last two years. We raised it three cents, the year after, we raised it three cents.
I don't see any way to do that right now.
And the problem too is that we submit on these grants, the city's portion, and if I can't prove that I can fund that city's portion.
We don't get it.
We, yeah. I mean, there's all, there's documents of what the grant pays for and what the city pays for, um, and I've gotta be able to have a line item to show, not saying we're gonna collect it next year. And Ms. Granberry's correct on the salaries. That's one thing I, a point I did wanna make, and glad you brought that up, is property tax does not impact utilities whatsoever, and utilities do not impact property tax whatsoever either.
I, I'll give y'all one last example, and I had the conversation with Kate about Wayne County, their tax rate's $1.91. Guess what? They don't offer their employees healthcare or retirement.
And was that exceeding the certified tax rate?
And it was exceeding the certified tax rate. Dollar, you did make it. Uh, and, and that's alarming to me.
I don't know how you find employees without offering those benefits.
Oh, yeah. Just because it is where it is. All right, any other questions?
I just feel, you know, I mean, we're all in it together, because we're all paying this.
Yeah.
Uh, but without a tax increase in eight or nine years, um, the, others have kicked the can down the road to where we're in the situation we're in now.
Keep flat.
Yeah. It's a flat, it's ready to go the reset again, you know? And, and to keep, you know, I feel like we're finally getting to that point where we can start doing these things like paving. You know, we can start setting up that fund so we can put money in there. We can get equipment that's needed, you know, and cover those projects that we've started.
And keep our employees.
And keep our employees happy, and.
Try to keep them.
Yeah, and try and keep them, and be competitive. Um, so, you know, I don't think, I don't think we can kick the can down the road anymore. We've gotta address it.
Now it's hit us eight years later.
Yeah.
We gotta do something, or we won't be able to keep up.
Yep.
With the city budget.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying, we can raise the taxes a little bit every year instead of.
We can probably go forward.
Probably be doing that on board.
If you pay it up, you don't wait it eight years, and now you're right here, we gotta do something.
Yep.
Well, it really hasn't been eight years, because actually, we raised them last year and the year before, but we just didn't raise them on something like this.
Right.
And when, and, and I'm gonna be the bad person up here, up here tonight, because, I mean, you know, this shoots my taxes up past $1,000. That's your city. And I'm okay with raising taxes, but when I compare our department heads and our staff and the number of people we got in our city, we got more staff than, uh, Columbia got, boom, Spring Hill. And we're still adding supervisors that I don't think we need. I'm sorry, I just don't, because that's what's hurting us. And I deeply researched it.
I don't think we've got more employees than Columbia.
Columbia's 400.
Yeah.
Now, I, you're counting police and everything.
Mm-hmm.
I'm counting department head in, in the office here. And Columbia also has, like, they have a different, they have more employees if you divide it up in a situation where if you divide offices up, they actually don't.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to officially determine Mount Pleasant's certified tax rate as a $1.28.
I so moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
No, I'll second the $1.28.
I love that.
I could have done a second.
Sorry, that's the certified tax rate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If you would make sure you do $1.2831, if you would.
1.28.31.
That was attached to your email, it's 1, yeah, 1.2831.
1,000 of a penny.
All right. I so moved as amended. All right. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. All right. Roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Before we do that, we're gonna have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing. Get ahead of us, sir. This is a public hearing, and, uh, is there anyone in the audience that cares to speak on this? Mr. Sims, you're signed, so.
This is the public hearing specifically.
Now, this is just certifying the tax rate, it is not what our new rate is going to, or what our current rate is going to be.
I'm in that part of it.
We're coming up in just a second.
This public, this is a public hearing on determining the tax rate.
Yeah. So this is a, this is, this is setting the certified tax rate.
Right.
Is $1.28.31. So we have a motion in a second, roll call vote.
If you look at Cory's note, it says, um, that the certified tax rate the commission needs to determine is that the, the rate provided to them, then you can explain that the certified tax rate will not be sufficient to meet the new budget, so the city is having a public hearing on whether to exceed the certified tax rate.
And that'll be next. I'm sitting there.
I think it's now. And then the next public hearing is on the budget.
Okay.
So.
I'm lost.
I'm lost. Because the way I read it, it says first we need the motion.
Yeah, but a certified tax rate first.
That's right. Then following that.
Following that.
Then we have to have another motion to.
Right.
For the budget.
Exceed, right? That's correct.
And then we go into the public hearing.
Yep.
Okay. Well, we have said that, in your opinion, the certified tax rate will not be sufficient to meet the new budget, so the city's having a public hearing on whether or not to exceed the certified tax rate, and then segue into the public hearing.
Do you want me to amend my motion again to include that?
I just think you should hear from the public on the certified tax rate, or intent to.
Well, we're given, I, would anybody like to speak? Ms. Sims said he'd like to speak when we do the, our rate that we're setting.
Okay.
Correct, Mr. Sims?
I'll speak, Bobby Daniels.
You didn't sign in, Bobby. No, I'm kidding.
Who needs your name, rate, serial number, and what is it?
For those of y'all that don't know, Bobby's a property.
Everybody knows. Thank you.
Appreciate you being here, Bobby.
Bobby, I'm kidding. Look, I got it right here, dude.
Yeah. There were two seats.
All right, so, so what I would say, and, and I agree with, I concur with Mr. Sims for, for maybe what he's gonna speak about, that's not this portion.
That's correct.
By statute of the law, uh, y'all have to, um, set a certified, agree to the certified tax rate, right, just so the citizens of the county knows what the 2022 reevaluation of the whole county did for your portion. Uh, with that being said, your prior tax rate was a $1.69 per $100 assessed value. And after the values went up for the 2022 value, the offset is the certified tax rate in the amount of 1.2831. And those four decimals are very important. Uh, hopefully, Mount Pleasant will grow in numbers, uh, but when you start using, when you start dropping the last two decimals on the Murray County budget or the city of Columbia budget.
It's significant.
It's significant now. I will concur with everything that I heard when I walked in. Uh, Mount Pleasant is at a disadvantage when it comes to this, okay? You've got a city that, uh, has been stagnant for a while, it is now starting to gain momentum. You're gonna have to be prepared, and unfortunately, uh, as Bill told you, we had a conversation. I remember Bob Murray talking about questioning citizens on what the tax, the penny rate was. I remember all the way back to $4,500 per penny, okay? And now, we've just now got to $15,400. So.
We're still in a disadvantage.
Your penny increase, it, it's not fair to judge Mount Pleasant when you start talking 20 or 30 pennies, uh, in comparison to the Murray County or Columbia or Spring Hill.
Not.
Because when you're talking 80 or $90,000 a penny, y'all raised like, uh, uh, Mr. Granberry said, you know, three or four cents last year, a year before, well, at 15,000, that's $30,000 or $45,000.
Yeah.
Now, uh, Kate and Loretta and Bill can convert the math to tell you what that does in your borrowing capacity as far as a revenue source. Not much. Okay?
Nope.
So, no, my, my portion as an elected official in this county is just to tell you the difference between the two numbers, and the $1.2831 is the State Board of Equalization certified tax rate that I reviewed and signed off on, and, uh, so therefore, it's, it's the correct number to start with.
Bobby, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion in a second, and we have, there was no one that cared to speak on this particular item. So with that, roll call vote, please, ma'am.
DeWitt White?
Yes.
Jackson Granberry?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
Yes.
Willie Alberson?
Yes.
And Eric Harvey?
Yes.
5-0, motion carries the certified tax rate is set at 1.2831.
Thank you. All right, next we have that we're going to set the tax rate cert, or the rate for the city of Mount Pleasant.
You're adopting the budget that has the tax rate in it of $1.69. And this is a public hearing as well.
And this is a public hearing as well, and I think this is where Mr. Sims wanted to speak. So come right ahead, please, sir.
I'm here again.
Yes, sir.
Sadly, I'm, I'm still, my, with my wife, but, uh, it's sad to see that people not willing to get out and speak on this matter, because it's gonna affect a lot of people when the bill comes to you this fall. I know personally, I'm retired, I'm on Social Security. I can't go to the Social Security office and say, I need a raise. If I do, they'll laugh at me. They'll laugh me out of that office, say, no, you ain't gonna get it. I have to cut back.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the point I wanna make, and, and there's a lot of folks in my shape right now, you know, there, like you said, the groceries are up, the gas is astronomical, it's just unreal where things have gone. But at some point in time, we can't just keep going to the, to the people and say, more, more, more. We're gonna have to say, we're gonna have to cut something back, we're gonna have to do a little, uh, budgeting to get things where it needs to be. And, uh, I just hope y'all will think about that when you're voting. I know, I know some people are running on a platform soon, saying no new taxes, and I'd like to see folks go in on that.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Anyone else care to speak? Please let Mr. Sims, the only one that cared to speak.
I'm like Mr. Sims. I'm like Mr. Sims, it, it's, uh, it's sad that citizens don't show up, but honestly, the folks needed to show up during your study sessions and your budget meetings, uh, that's where you find out really where money's going, that's where you find out why the need is there, a, and that's where citizens can determine if it's needs or wants. Uh, when you got these department heads here that's trying to do the best they can with their department, they're gonna have needs, and they're gonna have wants, and it's y'all's job to determine that. And you've gotta make the best financial decision for all the tax, taxpayers. So, with that being said, my point is speaking here is nothing more, I prepared this just to give you a quick, quick glance here, uh, real comparison of really what, uh.
Thank you.
Bill, let me get two more of these, and I'll explain to you really quick. Thank you.
Thank you.
And forgive me for, for maybe using this as a training session. Uh, I wish I'd had time prior to this to get in here and do this for you, uh, but I think it's okay. Uh, just to point out that the, the 2021 tax rates are published for Murray County and everything at the top, all the municipalities. Your next section is currently the 2022 tax rates that are in a meeting tonight. Uh, everybody except for the city of Spring Hill is meeting as we speak, okay? So I couldn't be at three places at one time. With that being said, if you look at 2022 certified tax rates, uh, I gave you a penny rate and a percentage decrease. I wanted to point out just for the explanation of the reappraisal program. Uh, for Murray County, the tax rate went down 39.39% to the certified tax rate of $1.6044. The city of Columbia came down by 40.55%, down to .8251. Mount Pleasant came down 31.7% to $1.2831, and then Spring Hill came down 22.76% for $73.90. All of that is just to show what the reappraisal does. And I will tell you, I, I get, I got asked this by the county commissioners, uh, matter of fact, your District 10 Commissioner in, in general asked this question from time to time, and he asked, does a reappraisal raise property taxes or tax liability to some individuals? The answer is yes. The, the reappraisal is a zero neutral, which simply means that if, uh, city of Mount Pleasant, and I'm sorry, I didn't look at your financials, but how many millions of dollars is property taxes bringing in? Two million, two point?
Million.
Yeah. Just.
But that last year, the low was a million.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So let's just say 1.9 million was raised with property tax rate last year. The zero neutral is for the certified tax rate to bring in that same 1.9 million. Now, there's some municipalities that can keep operating on that, there's some that cannot, and that, that's where Mount Pleasant is at now. So these percentages, just to show you the fairness of a reappraisal plan, but also me telling you that, yeah, there's, there's folks that's gonna, would have gotten a tax increase even if you accepted certified tax rate and did not exceed it, okay? Because when you equalize the county, uh, Along and Cherry Street over here may be growing at a rate of, you know, it, over the four years, and keep in mind, your, your value properties increased from 2018 values to 2022. They don't increase every year. Those rates are locked in for four years to the next reappraisal. So, uh, let's just use the downtown sector over here, we're all well aware, some houses over there, they sold for some pretty nice money. Uh, so, on average, a lot of those houses went up about 80%, okay? We've got some over, uh, behind Tegan CB, they only went up like 28% to 37%. And that depends on when they were built, okay? Uh, with, with that being said, that's the difference of who might have got a tax increase and who didn't. So with that being said, um, I'm not gonna name names, but, um, I, I put together a little spreadsheet here just for, matter of fact, everybody except for one person and Loretta, I actually calculated on your property card, okay? Uh, Mr. Davis, you okay with me using yours?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Davis?
Sure.
All right, so we're just gonna use his. Um, Mr. Davis' property went from 307, $300 to $378,000. That's a 23% increase. So, where Mr. Davis lives, when our statistical information was calculated and analyzed, we didn't have enough sales to justify a larger increase. So he got on the low side. So what does that do for Mr. Davis in the reappraisal? His county tax liability at certified tax rate, he went down $202. His Mount Pleasant certified tax rate, he went down to $85. Now we calculate what's being discussed tonight, Murray County's trying to go to $1.91, that's a $289 increase to Mr. Davis, and then that's a $384 increase for his Mount Pleasant side. Okay? So reappraisal, he would have went down 287 overall. With the increase in what's being discussed for the budgets for the county and the, Mount Pleasant city, his tax liability has gone up $673. He's a win-win example, okay? He's not gonna be impacted as very much. Um.
Well, wasn't he, bud?
Yeah. Well. And listen, everybody's property record card's public knowledge, okay?
Yeah.
So, so don't think I'm divulging any information here.
No, I'm glad there's going to be.
Yeah, I, I wanna give you one example of someone sitting here that I'm, I'm honestly not sure why our phone didn't ring, or this individual did not show up in our office. Um, this piece of property here was raised from 58,700 to 137,100.
That's me.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Granberry. I, I, I don't, I don't know your house in particular.
That's me, yes.
But now, we've received lots of phone calls from these type properties that got these increases. You went up a hundred and forty-one percent.
Yes.
Okay, so her reappraisal plan, where she automatically got a two thirty-three for the county increase and a two hundred dollar increase for City of Mount Pleasant, for a total of four thirty-five. Now with the ex, exceeding certified tax rate for these two municipalities, it's additional a hundred and five dollars and additional a hundred and thirty-nine dollars on top of that. So she's going up about two hundred and forty-three more dollars, uh, above, she's going up almost seven hundred bucks.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Better than a thousand.
Oh, I told you, my taxes going up over, over there, wow.
I, I'll do one more, but I, I don't want to, uh, um.
No, I appreciate you doing this because I was making general statements that if your appraisal was thirty percent higher, you're probably gonna spend thirty percent more, but it's not that, not that, uh, black and white.
All right, I can do mine, man. I'm, I'm wanting to check my man. I done, I done all of my hair out already.
All right.
Who's coming now?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
So, let's, let's get on.
All right, so Mr. Harvey here, he, he kind of falls in the, the mean or the weighted mean category here, which means he doesn't have a great effect when it comes to the reappraisal plan. Uh, his house went from a hundred and sixty-two thousand one hundred to two thirty-six two hundred, which is a forty-five point seven percent increase. The countywide average was forty-three point four. So he exceeded it by a little bit, but by the reappraisal with certified tax rate, he would have got a tax increase from Murray County government for forty-one dollars. He would have got a tax increase from Mount Pleasant for seventy-three dollars. Very minimal, doesn't create phone calls in October through February.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he would have probably said, okay. Uh, the increase from certified tax rate to what's being proposed for the county is a hundred and eighty-one dollars and the, um, City of Mount Pleasant, two forty. So for your overall obligation for Mount Pleasant, it's going to be nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And your overall obligation for Murray County is going to be eleven twenty-eight. In comparison to, you paid nine oh six in 2021 and six eighty-five, okay?
Four years from now will be a game changer.
Yep.
Oh, absolutely. Now, I, I say all this just to say that, uh, I, I honestly, I wish I had gotten down here during your planning.
Me too.
Kinda, kinda done this, but you, you can imagine the phone calls and walk-ins we've had for, for the reappraisal.
I appreciate it, very helpful.
Thank you for taking the time.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'm here for questions if you have any, uh, but again, uh, honestly, I, kudos to Mount Pleasant. Uh, things are happening. I, I want to see your tax base grow with some new construction because honestly, i- it's, uh, sad for me to report to people who call and ask, how many building permits was issued in Mount Pleasant? Uh, I mean, I have to go back for years to get double-digit numbers, okay? Uh, versus City of Columbia, nine hundred and seventy-five. Spring Hill, six hundred and forty. Murray County, fourteen hundred, you know. Uh, so you have to have money to make things happen, and, and what the general population may not understand is, as Kate, uh, said earlier, these property tax and sales tax, they have to be able to produce revenue stream to make the obligation for the bond fund, the bond issue. A, a, and if, if it doesn't show enough.
You won't get the bond.
You're not gonna get the money. So, now, again, I stated in public forum here that I don't know where the money's going, I'm not looking at your budget, I'm not here for that. I'm just here to explain reappraisal to you and to explain the numbers from how I, I view them. So I appreciate what you do, and if you got questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, head to the public hearing, do we have a motion? To accept our budget for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three?
I make a mo.
Go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to accept our budget for twenty twenty-three.
You said act rate.
In the second.
Act rate at one sixty-nine, one sixty-nine, nothing.
Second. Got a motion in a second. Roll call vote please, ma'am.
Phil White?
Yes.
Jackson Granberry?
Because I'm here for the people, I have to say no.
Mike Davis?
I already said, no.
Willie Alveson?
Yes.
Eric Harvey?
Yes.
With a vote of three to two, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, thanks for everybody for speaking and, and making your voices heard. All right, number two, I'm making sure this matches what I had. We have Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Murray Museum of Local History, and that is for fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, we, we know, at last meeting, if there's any questions, that's paying their, basically their heat.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash seventeen as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Community Development Corp., Main Street, and that is in the amount of twenty-five thousand. Any questions? I think we all know where that goes, they do a lot of work for it.
Mayor, I'll make a motion in favor of Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eighteen as presented.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen, a resolution authorizing the appropriation of municipal funds uh, for nonprofit organization Mount Pleasant Senior Citizens, and that's a thousand dollars.
I make a motion that we pass Resolution twenty twenty-two dash nineteen as ordered.
Second. Got a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one, resolution to move sanitation funds to the general fund, and I think Kate's explained all that and done a good job of it.
Yeah, just want to make sure that everybody understands that the sanitation fund is considered an enterprise fund, but it's not like utilities. We would not be able to do this in utilities if, if, if we weren't able to pay our bills, but we can do that with, with sanitation.
But the seventeen fifty will still be.
Right now, it's seventeen fifty. To, to break even, we calculated we would need six dollars and twenty-five cents more a month.
So you're talking about what's on our bill is going to be moved to the general fund?
No.
You won't notice anything different on your bill.
You won't know.
I know we won't anything, yeah, no, that's not what I'm saying, but that's what I'm saying, that's the money that we're moving there, right?
Yes, your fresh pickup.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So, so your property taxes will supplement the losses we're seeing in the city.
Okay.
Property sales and everything.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding that right, okay?
Yeah.
And what you're doing with them there.
All right.
I make a motion that we, uh, pass Resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two dash twenty-one to move sanitation funds to the general fund.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two, resolution to amend the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee employee handbook.
And I read off every single change at the meeting last month, and there, you'll see that now that you have the resolution in front of you, exactly what I read off is listed as bullet points for the changes. No changes on that since, uh, we met on the twenty-first.
Okay, good. Any questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Move that we accept Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Bid award for Falls Creek.
Um, Mayor, Commissioners, if you remember, we put, we, uh, opened bids on May second, and in the May meeting, we asked to defer the vote because the bids came in higher than anticipated, and, um, we've been instructed by our consultant that works with FEMA to go ahead and accept this bid while we have it. Um, the Mofield Brothers Construction at a hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred, and we are working very hard with FEMA to make up a difference. Right now FEMA has already agreed to pay ninety, and we're trying to get, fill that, bridge that gap of about another ninety. Uh, word is today that, uh, she sent out another email and was hoping to have an answer next week.
Cool.
But we didn't want to risk losing that bid.
Right.
We have here.
Yeah.
For another ninety, we're trying to bridge that gap.
Amen.
Does any of this, Kate, come out of the, I guess, the water bill, or is it all coming out of the general fund?
All comes out of the water fund.
Oh, okay, I just thought I'm.
Yeah, or, or the revenue goes into the water fund and the expenses go out of the water fund, yeah.
But that's what I'm saying, that it's not actually coming out of the general fund.
It can't.
Right, I just want to make, make sure.
No, you, you're right, correct.
Any other questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion to accept the bid. Move that we accept the bid for, uh, Falls Creek at a hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred.
No.
Yes.
Yeah, you got it, Mofield Brothers Construction.
Mofield Brothers Construction. Got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
That seems to be the last order of business, doesn't it?
Yes, can't have anything else on there.
Can't have anything else on there. Entertain a motion that we can adjourn the meeting that started.
On the twenty-first.
On the twenty-first, I so moved. Got a motion, a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks for everybody for coming.